We're gonna go get started on our roundtable for our probable potential housing advisory board people.
So I just thought that statistic would be helpful.
Thanks, thank you ma'am.
Absolutely, so one of the comments I just I just have is I'm really, really want to just sit here and kind of understand what you guys are looking at, what could be a potential in this county? And really think about the rural areas of this county and the added cost of septic and wells. As we all know, that adds somewhere between fifteen to thirty-two percent in the total cost of structures, depending on the size of the structures. Versus having a rural system and if and how that creates a avenue for affordability. And you know, those are my thoughts currently of moving forward, especially with the unincorporated areas that have no septic or sewage systems or water systems. And and what we can do, all in a brainstorm to be able to make that affordable.
I just want to give one more piece of context. Park County, the AMI at a hundred percent is in twenty twenty-three was ninety-five thousand four fifty, and that's for household. Rural and urban housing and rentals are considered affordable for household incomes at a hundred and forty percent of AMI, which is a hundred and thirty-three thousand six thirty. Monthly mortgage or rent payments on the average in Park County are two thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. So you see the challenge. Those are all numbers that the state makes funding available for, which don't work for the people who live here. So.
Rural agricultural designation.
Well, I think you have to look at them.
No, that's good for them, I meant for us, can we get away from front range and be a rural agriculture.
There's rural, there's rural, there's rural resort, and there's urban.
We could be rural then, right?
Rich, pertinent to what? So when you're talking about the designation, good question.
This is Kim, I'll try and.
Open it up.
Well, I think the thing that we have to look at too is we have different needs in different parts of the county.
Agreed.
Fair Play's needs, oh, Fair Play, firstly, on this side of the county, we have two incorporated communities. I think.
Okay, you're good, you agree.
But but we have two incorporated communities who as entities can do things on their own or partner with the county, as you were mentioning. The challenge in Bailey, on the eastern side of the county, is that we have no established governmental structure. I doubt that we ever will. And and so the county becomes our go-to governmental entity. So any help we need or any operational elements that we can pursue has to come from the county. But we're also constrained differently from Fair Play, that we have virtually no land for development. So, and in fact, most much of the land that is might potentially be available is county-owned. So, you know, I know the county doesn't want to become a landlord, and the county doesn't want to become a developer. But the county, I think, could do a number of things to facilitate development in the eastern part of the county through its through its existing land inventory. It could help with regulation, it could make the regulatory process easier. And I think, you know, it's difficult to solve the water and septic issues. You know, you can tie into an existing system and perhaps increase the capacity of that system. You can, I'm aware of a couple situations where you could solve part of the problem, maybe with water, but maybe not septic. You know, certainly, I serve on the board of the Deer Creek Metro District, you know, we have water, water could be piped various locations nearby, but that doesn't solve the septic issue. I do think we need to look, you know, Fair Play's solution, I think, has been mostly single-family. Detached single-family. I don't know that that would work as well initially in Bailey. I think townhomes are more likely, some kind of density is more likely. I know that in the past, Commissioner, I've mentioned to you, you know, fading west, the housing developer and home construction firm in Buena Vista, which has factory-built homes that are remarkable and unique and very cost-effective. You know, they also, they build multi-family products, so you could look at four or five-plex as an initial start. I think those could, I believe your price points for single-family are accurate, but I think you could build a more cost-effective price point if you increase the density and do, you know, let's say a four or five-plex, and look at it from that perspective. I think that.
You're talking about purchase, not rent.
Purchase or rent.
Either one.
Yeah, I just point just an idea, right?
Just conceptually here, you know, and cluster it. I think if you move away from the whole perspective of we have to have a septic system and water delivery system for eighty homes, that's a different problem than providing it for five homes or ten homes. And the thing is, we need to do something. You know, because I know those statistics, I know I made a speech to the chamber a couple of years ago where I solution, and I think I was using at the time an eighty-seven thousand AMI, and which is essentially half of what is required to purchase a home at those price points. So, and somebody came up to me afterwards at the chamber and said, well, all we have to do is we just have to all pay fair wages to our employees. And I said, why, I can't pay fifty dollars an hour to my liquor store staff, that's not gonna work. And so, you know, the solution is multi-pronged. But I think if if we look at smaller incremental solutions, let's try a solution that isn't overblown, that isn't, we're gonna solve the entire problem by simply injecting a hundred units into the into the market. Let's let's try it on a smaller scale and see what works. Let's put our toe in the water, try to look at all the technologies that are out there. You mentioned technologies for septic and water, and I would say fading west has technologies for the housing component. You have the ability to provide perhaps advantageous land availability and regulatory environments that might be more conducive to development. I think we have to look as a community, as a group, as neighbors, on how we solve the septic and water issues. But I think there are solutions there, we just have to be willing to kind of think outside the box and go there.
I appreciate your comments, I know, I think you're spot on. We're gonna take Kimberly right now, and then we're gonna come back to Teresa and Jeremiah and anybody else. Just because you're not a part of our advisory potentially group, you're welcome to speak if you have.
Kimberly, you're unmuted.
Okay, Kimberly. Thank you, yeah, thanks for having the virtual option, super helpful. So, just like Alma, I'm sure Bailey has the same thing, because Willowisp and Bailey have the same operator responsible and charge, our ORC. We have the same challenges regarding CDPHE and for the testing and the non-compliance. I know CDPHE issued kind of a blanket waiver to stop the pursuit of all the non-compliance because of how the testing has changed and the regulations have changed. So I think it's kind of a broader thing, can the county work with CDPHE? Because all of our water plants are old, ours is almost forty years, Bailey's is older, I'm sure Alma has the same thing of, you know, multi-millions of dollars that we're all in different parts of the process to try to update these systems. But it's also kind of the state level too, right? Like, we have a meeting on Monday with CDPHE specifically, Willowisp does, regarding this issue. And how can we try to come to resolution with what we have, because it's not gonna change overnight, in terms of the infrastructure and where they want us to be? So I know Bailey has the same issue, so we're all gonna have these challenges from that cost-wise and just infrastructure-wise. And I agree, I'm so sorry, I didn't catch the gentleman who was speaking before his name, but how do you figure out, start the project smaller to see if, you know, the interests and who, you know, would live there? And do they come there for the jobs in Fair Play or wherever? But I think it's also like a grander scale of just infrastructure in the county, working with the state entities who are sending letters and changing kind of the guideposts for how water and sewer are looked at regulatory-wise. And that we can't even, even with having full-time operators and people on site every day, you can't stay within the boundaries just based on kind of the reality we're living in.
Anything else?
No, that's just my, mine is from running a actual water plant, like I'm, you know, president of the Water Board for Willowisp, it's a constant beating drum, and I know the other districts had the same issues, right? Obviously Alma's been very vocal about it and their plant and how it kind of exists, but it's gonna be a challenge if you try to, you know, if you try to tie into systems and we're still out of compliance, right? So how do we also work to becoming compliant, whether it's all of us, some of us, whatever that is? But it's a huge issue we deal with, I mean, I get notices and letters all the time, right? And we're constantly going to them and saying, how do we be in line with the reality of today, but with how our plant infrastructure sits?
Yeah, I think you're right spot on, Kimberly, because you know firsthand the cost, just the cost of testing.
Oh, yeah, it's hundreds of dollars a month now. Yeah, I mean, it went from being very reasonable in terms of testing, we use, you know, a laboratory very close by in Golden, relatively speaking, because, you know, Willowisp is right over the Park County line, but it's gone from maybe being forty to fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, to five hundred to a thousand dollars a month, right? Depending on what we have to do, if we have to fecal testing for, let me do sledge hauling, right? And those costs increase, right? Like sledge hauling increases, and all the districts have to use companies that haul sludge that are in the requirements of CDPHE, right? You can't just use anybody to haul your sludge, like if you have a private septic, you have to use a company that can fill those requirements, right? We use a company called Denali because of that. So, but that increases, right? Every truck per year can go up in, you know, a thousand bucks or whatever that is. So all those factors come into play when we're looking at our budgets, right? I think one of our biggest lineups of budgets in Willowisp literally is sledge hauling and also testing. We had to increase it because we went, we would have exceeded if we did not look at increasing that budget lineup, because it just becomes more expensive. And we're still out of compliance, right? So it's not like us doing that is solving the CDPHE issue. I mean, I'll let you guys know, you know, Dave, Amy, and Jason on Monday after the call, to share kind of what that looks like with CDPHE. I'm assuming it's the first of many conversations we'll have, but it's not like Monday's the answer. It's how we, we were able to actually get them to respond so we can have a call, which was challenging enough, just that piece.
And I think.
No, no, I just was gonna say, I agree with you, like, we have the same, Bailey's engineer, Will Ratz, is the same engineer we have, right? So we're behind Bailey in terms of timing, but we started the process with Will. But like you said, it's a multi-step process and multiple years, right? There's like multiple things happening at the same time to have a district, you know, put kind of as a a non, I can't remember the exact term, but kind of like a non-wealthy district, right? And then all these other paths to get the grants and qualify, in addition to all the engineering planning and just everything else that goes into place. So it's, I wish it was a quick fix, but it's just not. But I think the CDPHE thing you mentioned, Dave, is a huge issue, because it's, those guidelines move forward while our world is still static. And there's only so much we can do, right? Until new plants are built or whatever.
Yeah, we all have a limitation, we have an upper limit.
Yeah, awesome, thanks.
You bet, thank you ma'am, Teresa?
It feels, I feel like everything that I had to suggest has been shot down because of, basically, no, no, no. Basically because of non-compliance and lack of funds and everything else that we've known. I attended a seminar Tuesday with Curtis DeGrucc Kennedy, and he's with the Bell Policy, are you familiar with this?
Yes.
Tank? And so he gave a talk, and a lot of the stuff he was talking about related to the front range, a lot of Jeffco and Denver or Nevada kind of stuff, but excuse me, I was the only I was the only rural representative. And I basically laid it out the way you did, Dave, in your introduction. And he said, you know, we've talked about this round, and really what rural communities can do, what commissioners can do, is dedicate land that the county owns, whether you've gotten it through tax sales or whatever ways that the county has gotten lands. And that that donation or that designation of the land for the project can bring down the cost enough that you can attract a developer. And so that was their, that was their main push, is that that's what, that's what the commissioners can do. And then, as Mark also mentioned, the working with the regulations, trying to speed things up and making, making stuff more affordable. It's, I'm sad to hear about Willowisp, because I know we have, the county owns that chunk of school board land or whatever.
We have ten acres and right there.
Right there, and if they had, you know, maybe it could work out that part of the investment could be to upgrade the system and everybody could benefit. Downtown Bailey, I'm sure there's, there's some, does Bailey send in water, are they in compliance, are they okay?
You know, I don't know about that, but they have some issues.
Of course, of course.
Yeah.
Just waiting for that pipe to burst.
I believe Fair Play is the only one that you really consider to comply.
Totally, that we know for sure. So, and then, of course, you guys have some land around here, you know, so maybe the idea would be with the designation of the land by the county for a project, trying to bring in some developers to start working on this. And that, I know you guys don't want to be in the building business, and you won't be, but just that little bit of a gift from the county could be enough to spur on a developer that doesn't feel like they need to make a mint, but they could do a reasonable development, make it affordable. Plus, there's so many new methods of cheaper construction going on right now, that it's just amazing. I think costs can come down with a wise contractor.
So can I, can I make a real quick comment on that? Because I appreciate that point of view, and especially with the contractors possibly making that cost come down. But we're looking at, even if you throw the property in there, you're still talking, it's still unaffordable. The best way, and so what I would like to.
What do you mean unaffordable? Because I'm not talking about building homes to sell, I'm talking about multi-units to rent as apartments. And I guess I should have started there.
Okay.
Because what I'm thinking of is the firefighters and the teachers, the people that don't know they're gonna stay in this community. And they can't afford to buy a home, they can't, and there's not enough rental properties. So I'm really talking about rental properties.
Okay.
So multi-unit.
Which makes sense, because then you've got to find that contractor that's willing to build for under, probably under realistically, two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to three hundred dollars a square foot, which is, that's gonna be tough to find that.
It's tough.
And then you're also gonna look at, when you're talking large units and unincorporated, this is my concern, the biggest concern, because you can possibly give land away. You could possibly get a builder to put something together for a good rate if he gets some sort of a stipend on it when it comes to the state, right? But when it comes to the septic, the sewer side, for buildings that big, you're talking in the tens of millions. To put in that septic treatment system.
Yeah, because the current systems we have don't have that capacity.
Then all of a sudden, you're back up to that four hundred to five hundred dollars per square foot bill. That's where my concern is, is how do we get there? And and there may be ways, I just don't, I don't know.
And just a comment about, you know, market forces, you know, the builder, I mean, we don't want to be in the housing business, nor in the rental business. So you attract a builder by donating the land, and then they do their project, but they still have to, there's a profit motive within this, and they have to rent it to cover their costs.
They need a management company.
And so, yeah, and the management company, and that's where the rental units even become unaffordable for the workers that need the housing the most.
Now, have you guys, have you guys talked to anybody that has done this, I know?
We did Habitat for Humanity project right here in Fair Play, we donated land. Habitat controls the rent, controls the housing prices, and those units aren't selling because they're not affordable to people who have the demand to buy them.
Again, I'm talking rental, now, I don't know if you'd like to talk to Winter Park, they just put in forty units of workforce housing. I'm talking workforce housing, so we're talking rentals. And if you know of communities around that have actually successfully, aside from the cost of trying to get our septic up to par, if you know of communities that have successfully done it with a management company, partnering with private land and so forth, I think Winter Park Resort helped with that side of it, they gave the land, which helped. But they do have a management company, Winter Park Resort isn't running it. So, it might be something to look into.
I think we could, we could, I think, is a statement was pretty clear that we are willing to be a partner on the inside, because that's.
I'm right next to him.
You know, we, we end up with.
Hi there, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm sorry I couldn't be in the room with you today. Dave, I think you're there is here. This Affordable Housing Board needs to be seated, maybe even with full members and alternates. To, this discussion is what this board needs to be doing to advise you of this issue. And Teresa, you were spot on. You know, we shouldn't be looking at the need for people to buy affordable second homes or retirement homes. We need workforce rental housing and transitional rental housing for the workforce that hopefully is gonna be able to fill the jobs for businesses that end up growing our local economy. And I know the county says they don't want to be in the landlord business or anything, but you already are, you have the sheriff's bunkhouse. And that is just a small piece of this big puzzle in this complex issue that we're dealing with. And I hope that this Affordable Housing Board starts figuring out some long-range planning, but look at successful operations that are applicable to our rural communities here with so limited municipal infrastructure. But I really think that this board needs to be activated and again, it's such a huge, complex problem. That's why the state is trying to give funds to help us solve these problems. But we have to have a comprehensive plan and a thought-out one that initially takes a look at things that are gonna be successful on the small scale, like you've been talking about. But I really think it needs to get going, and again, the emphasis has to be on having public-private partnerships to get affordable, higher-density rentals out there for our community.
Anything else, Greg?
That's it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, Rich?
Greg, thank you, that is absolutely what was on my mind as well. I think, so we all sat down here and we say we need affordable housing, but we haven't really started at the why. And we need to start at the why, because there's so many ideas around here of like, okay, how do we build it? How do we sell it? How do we get the funds for it and all that? What are we trying to accomplish by having affordable housing in different parts of Park County? And that's gonna look different in different parts of Park County. So some of them might be rentals, some of them might be high-density, some low-density, et cetera. But are we trying to have places for our public workers to live? Are we trying to promote tourists? Like, what are we doing? We need to start with the why, that's gonna tell us the location, that's gonna tell us the scope, that's gonna, and that's only really gonna happen once this board is bored. And I like what Mark said about, you know, start small, so let's identify an issue, okay? We need more short-term, more affordable housing in this particular area for this particular purpose. Rather than building it and seeing who comes, we need to tailor it to what we need as a community. So I think that's super important. As far as the other thing I was gonna bring up is front-end versus back-end, right? So we have the front end of it, which is acquiring the land, building the projects, and so on and so forth. And we have the back end, making it affordable for the people that are ultimately going to purchase it if we go the purchase route, right? So if we decide to do a four. So if we decide to do a four-unit multifamily and put them up for sale, how do we make it affordable on the back end? You had brought up that the designation of Park County. One of the things a lot of people don't know is that all of Park County is USDA eligible for financing on the consumer end. That includes four-unit condos in Fairplay, like things that you wouldn't expect to be eligible for super kinds of financing. So there's things that we can do just in the existing infrastructure of lending to make things affordable. But on the front end, we need to make sure the build cost is affordable, right? So you have your Prop 123 funds and everything else that we can use towards that. We have creative financing we can use on the back end, but we really need to start with the why. And and that's the most important thing, I think, what I just said, so.
What's your answer to the why? Why, what do we need?
My my initial answer would be housing for for government workers.
Workforce housing.
For, yeah, exactly. Other people, see, and that's the thing, when you say, like, why do we need affordable housing? Every one of us thinks that the answer is self-evident, but every answer is going to be the same, or different, rather. So we need to come to a consensus on, not necessarily that there's only one reason, but where do we start? Like, what do we start with? Who do we start to accommodate?
Well, and it's just, it's just not only the government workers, it's also the workers in our service industries. You go into a restaurant, they'll tell you they can't get more waiters in because there's no place for them to live. People are driving from breakfast to work in restaurants.
And I think that's going to vary from community to community as well. So the the needs of the Bailey community, for example, versus Fairplay in in the balance between government workers or or service industry is going to be different, right? Maybe one of them entails homes for sale and one of them entails rentals.
It has always been on the table for the county. It's the, and and workforce housing has always been the goal to help people who want to live here and work here be able to afford to live here and work here. But it's that that affordability part, no matter how hard you try, and the limitations on where we can build, and the cost is just, you know, if there was some new magic technology to make, you know, a fourplex or a fiveplex with a shared septic that would would work and was affordable and would land it at a price that worked for people at at, you know, the service level, you know, we'd be advertising for builders to come up here and do it. And and so any brainstorming, I know that this, we're not the only one. Teller County has to upgrade their water system. They're in the same boat. And all of rural Colorado is that operates off a septic. And so there's a lot of good minds thinking about how to improve. We just got to twist CDPHE's arm when good technology comes out for them to let it be used. Because there are half the problem right now.
Have you done some research into different possibilities?
Yeah.
Building in other communities with lower cost, with the need for septic? Because a lot of places build where there's already infrastructure.
That's right.
You have to look at people that are building where there's no infrastructure.
And there's
Nobody's doing it.
Well, I'm not going to say nobody, but all the counties I've reached out to are.
Greg, I apologize. I have to leave. I have some complications with a surgery and getting with my surgeon. Is it okay if I just share?
Go ahead.
And I apologize for not being able to stick.
I want your input because you're in the front lines of this.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, so I guess the the thing that, and this is a little different direction of steering the conversation. But what I kind of wanted to just share is talking about removing barriers, right? You know, as far as how to empower people, I mentioned the last time I spoke up there just briefly about like, how do we find fair market ways and market-based approaches to encourage housing, right? You know, like, you you made a comment, it was a very innocent comment, saying we just need to find a builder, you know, that's willing to work without make it admit, right? Like, but I don't want a shoddy contractor that's willing to get paid less, you know? And so my thoughts are like, how do we?
It's a philanthropist, not a shoddy contractor.
You're not going to find very many of those full-filling rocket developers, I'll tell you. But like, how can we remove barriers? Because like, so like, let's look at a development timeline, right? Let's say you're looking at an average of five years to get a development. We can remove barriers to allow them to get their development done in four years or three years by having certain initiatives that just remove all these, you know, things that developers can get tangled with. Then, you know, maybe we can come up with a product where the end result is it's a more cost-effective product, but the developers making the same amount of money, because they're not, they're not looking at always total dollars. They're looking at total dollars in a time-bound environment. So they want to know how, if I make those dollars in half the amount of time, great, then I can sell them for less. And so that's really where I think we should steer this committee is how do we remove those barriers and pay a lot of attention? I always like to talk about unintended consequences and no offense to government, you know, like, but there are a lot of unintended consequences that come up when the government tries to get caught. So, for example, you know, and I don't mean to press a hot button. So I have a love-hate relationship with short-term rentals. I'll say that right now. I I've built a lot of wealth with short-term rentals, but I've also seen the impact that they can have on communities. But one thing that's been very interesting with my development, I've been getting a lot of calls lately from people saying, hey, you know, I was looking in Colorado and I was trying to find a place where we could do short-term rentals. And it came up that Park County was a place where short-term rentals were friendly, they were friendly to short-term rentals. You know, we know that Summit's not, we know El Paso's not, but and and I sat and got real in the weeds with what's going on. I know we're revising all the rules, but like, what if Park County was like, hey, no, we're pro-short-term rentals, done right, done in an effective way? And and maybe we can bring in developers that will say, hey, we want half of these. Yeah, they can be short-term rentals. The other half, we want to be market-based, you know, you can only fill your park up with half-short-term rentals. Instead of trying to say, no, the solution is no short-term rentals, you know? As in in this market, it's a little different, but like in Colorado Springs, where I've spent most of my adult life, like, it's like less than two percent of the houses are short-term rentals and all the price blame is on short-term rentals, right? Like, we know that that's not really what's driving it, but looking at the unintended consequences of saying we're shutting down short-term rentals. Well, now developers have less demand for their products, you know? And so then they're like, well, then I won't even do a development there because all they want is affordable housing. And that sounds like I'm going to get squeezed. That sounds like, and we talk about the government programs, I'm going to have to dive in all this red tape. I've got a lot of friends that do affordable housing, but I only have one that navigates the governmental land of grants. Because everybody else is like, we can do it better without that system, you know? Because that system is broken. One of my buddies was working on a project up in Estes Park, and he's been working on it for like three or four years, and it just got shut down. And it was all of all these grants and all that, and they were trying to do a good work and provide hundreds of houses. And they never even got, and it never even moved dirt, you know? Whereas if we can come up with market-based solutions, I think we can really make an impact. And we can be, you know, a bastion of light to the state that is increasingly making building more and more difficult. I'm so thankful that, like, from a building code standpoint, we're not trying to adopt all the latest regulations because it just adds so, it's the opposite of looking for affordable housing. It's just, you know, I mean, depending on who you're talking to, it's fifty, over a thousand dollars per house. We have to pay extra with the new regulations, so. Anyway, so sorry, I went off on a little tangent, but that's where I think we really should be focusing is what can we do to not, you know, even have these public programs, but instead have groups of people that remove these barriers, you know? So.
My opinion, I think, looking at the future of what is coming is a big part of this whole idea. Not just the workforce here currently. And and but my concern is, how do we make it affordable even in rentals? Because, you know, costs are costs. And there's things we can do as a county to really help that out. But when it comes to the septic and the water, those are costs that people don't think about in a municipality. Whenever you're paying a total of forty thousand dollars for taps and then it's just a monthly fee, it's not something people think about as the upfront cost that you have to pay.
Jason, do you think we're going to give, I mean, it is it is revenue having that many people coming to your county. Are we going to be basically Tlatazo and over to the canyon? Are we giving that away because that's where the people will live? Because there's no place here.
That that is a concern. Absolutely. That's been in my mind, for sure. How do we consume and keep that here, but then how do we not have a bust town? Does that make sense? As we all know, there's boom towns, phenomenal, they work out really well, but there's a blue bus. And so I have a concern with that, too. Do we overbuild and then all of a sudden we have a bust town? Then we got a whole other issue on our hands.
Which might be the wisdom of repurposing existing hotels. Is I I don't know that much about Lake George. Is that Emboden Hotel still going down there? Are there some places down there?
All four units are there.
Oh, I thought it was bigger than that. There's no hotel down in Lake George. It's not a resort, Amy.
That was a retrofitted pizza restaurant, okay? Because we had pizza for lunch.
Okay.
So 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 that being said, moving forward with order, should we choose who's going to be on there? There's a lot to look at, a lot more than just, hey, let's join into one, two, three and try to build some houses. There's a lot more involved.
Yeah.
And and I I think that's where we're coming at it, at you guys with.
Well, yeah, you and I might be able to work on the contracting piece. I can do some research.
But these are nodes that are unknown. Mr. Johnson, you want to comment? You have the floor.
Um, yes, thank you. A a couple of things that I just want to mention. You know, Dick Elsner was the commissioner that was kind of designated checking into a lot of these success stories, went to conferences, trying to approach the affordable housing issue. And I I I think going forward, we definitely need to involve his knowledge. And then the other thing is, you know, the Buttermilk subdivision was a PUD, residential PUD authorized by the town of Fairplay. And I don't know if it reverted back to vacant land when the county bought it. But that has the utilities in place. The county can do a PUD having the the fairgrounds usage on the two-thirds of the parcel to towards the rodeo arena. And the third, on the west side, abutting the Crawford Lane residential properties, there could be a PUD that allows for some of these affordable housing projects with the county still owning the land, reducing the overall cost for the development. And that's in place right now. If you want to do a fourplex or something right now, experimental, to see how the kinks can be worked out for the next one, I I think you have to, and nobody has even addressed that property in this whole discussion. I think you start with the low-hanging fruit. This is the perfect site to get started on. Thank you.